And settle down. Mr. Endo, could you start us off with?
Can I get your authorize for the polling? So just to let you know what I've been watching what's going on nationally and I was thinking, it's time for our state and city to be shaken as well because things need to be made porno. Everything we do in ourselves, the way we treat our neighbor, a lot of violence we've been seeing in Hawaii across our nation actually. We need God's help. So with that, let us pray. Father, I thank you that there is a shaking that's taking place. And I just pray that in our nation, our state, our city government, in ourselves, all things will be made porno, especially with you. That we can no longer abuse the things you have given us. And I ask your blessing. Thank you for all those that are here, especially the young ones. Lord, put in our hearts and minds as adults that we are here to make this a better Hawaii, a better Hawaii for our young people that's coming up. So direct us, or pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
We start off with the city officials, Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening, everybody. I'm firefighter Leggett with the YNI Fire Station. So first, we're going to go over incident stats for the month of January. We had one structure fire, two brush fires, 16 nuisance fires, one cooking fire, and three activated alarms with no fire. Next is emergencies. We had 156 medicals, six motor vehicle collisions, and one mountain rescue. And that's going to be it for the stats. Next is going to be the fire safety tips. For this month, it's going to be about preparedness during a power outage. First is prepare your supplies. Ensure your flashlights, radios, etc. Contain batteries that are charged. Don't forget to charge extra batteries. Prepare your family. Check in with family members. If anyone relies on medical devices requiring power, ensure you plan ahead of time. Prepare your food and water. Set your fridge and freezer to the coldest settings. Keep them closed as much as possible during an outage. Fill up water containers for drinking and other needs. Protect your electronics. Unplug unnecessary electronics to prevent damage from power surges. Never touch down power lines. Always assume lines are energized and dangerous. And yeah, that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good evening, board members, members of the community. Corporal Pagan with the Honolulu Police Department. Sorry, let me get my camera going. Sorry. Happy New Year. Corporal Pagan with Honolulu Police Department, District Gate Community Pacing Team. I do have your stats for January. In January, we had 33 motor vehicle thefts, four in our area, 17 burglaries, four in our area, 132 thefts, 23 in our area, 20 unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, seven in our area. There was a total of 8,356 calls for service. 2,069 were in our area. That's all I have at the moment. Opened any comments, questions, or concerns?
Thank you, Corporal Pagan. We're going to move on from comments and questions. A, be safe out there. And thank you, HFD, for your updates too. Ocean Safety. The question is going to be asked during. Okay, well, we'll move to community concerns. If you guys have any of those questions that you have for HPD or HFD, now's the time you guys can ask those questions. Hello, I'm Austin Salcedo. Corporal Pagan, a question pertaining to the initiative push for the recreational marijuana for everyone. Is there a mechanism like how the DUI enforcement is there for alcohol? Is there a testing where under the influence on the highway? Is there a measurement? Is there a method of measuring the cannabis level of the usage of DUI using the cannabis, like breathalyzers for alcohol use?
Thank you for your questions. Very good question and one that a lot of people don't understand. Yeah, unfortunately, there's no breathalyzer that will determine marijuana, level of marijuana intoxication based on the marijuana. We do have drug recognition experts that can tell that someone is driving impaired and they're trained to a point where they can actually determine what type of drugs or medication they may be on based on their assessment of the test. One of the problems that a lot of police departments have had throughout the country with legalizing marijuana is that it's not one of those situations like DUI where you can easily find out how much alcohol someone has in their body. As most of us know, when you partake of marijuana, it stays in your blood system for about 30 days or so. So there's nothing that we can do at the moment that will tell us how intoxicated based on marijuana someone is based on a blood test at that moment.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board member Dana Newman.
So the question that I have for Corporal Pagan regards to ticketing that is taking place at the beaches in terms of those individuals who are houseless, who are chronically houseless. What is the reason the department chooses to ticket knowing that the individuals are unable to pay the fine to begin with? But we continue to use that model of policing.
Well, the reason for it is that we don't pick and choose the way that we enforce the laws based on someone's economic situation. You know, we've gotten, believe it or not, we've gotten a lot of complaints about people that camp for the weekend and maybe stay, overstay, and they get citations and they ask how come we're not citing the homeless as well? So again, we're not basing our citations on whether you're homeless or have a home and just camping. It's violating the law, which is being in the park after hours, criminal littering, camping where not permitted, illegal dumping and stuff like that. So it's not a matter of us targeting based on someone's situation.
Mr. Manako.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm curious to hear that are they still working on another road into YNI? Do you immediately know if they are or not?
Mr. Manako, when we have transportation committee updates, we will inform you at that time. Right now, this isn't an open discussion from board member to community. It's just for us to hear the community concerns and the questions. And so either we report back the next month or we can connect with you offline and get you the answers to your questions. But I will give an update on some of the federal funds and things that are coming down the pipes right now.
Last month, I heard there was supposed to be one, but for some reason or another, they canceled the meeting. And so I was just wondering because they were going to open up. From what I understood, excuse me for a minute. From what I understood, they were going to have, they were going to be speaking about YNI post emergency access problem.
Right.
And so I was just concerned about that.
Mahalo for bringing your question and your concern, and we will be addressing that. Thank you.
So you folks are getting into that right now. Okay, thank you very much. When you folks do, please let me know. Thank you.
Go ahead, state your name.
Hala mai kako ova onani hikuna hoi no keiaaina. It was a very enlightening day today. A lot of policy talk today. And Corporal, I hear you speaking policy. Right? And what Dana is talking about is that these policies that are in play, that are not our policies of the Hawaiian Kingdom. They have no they have no Ola for us. Right? And so us Kanaka all over Hawaii are going through a whole lot of shit. A whole lot of trauma. A whole lot of confusion, a whole lot of anger. A whole lot of hate even. That's not us. And stuff got to change. And it comes from you guys in these departments that are supposed to be Kanaka. You have the voices inside to make the changes from the inside out to help us be Kanaka. Stop putting these policies over our people. Understand more of our culture. That's what Dana is talking about. There's culture in these places and spaces that we need to reconnect to. And by these policies being imposed upon us, these policies again that I say is not ours, kakou. It only brings us down and hurts us even more. And so I'm asking you people that are supposed to be our leaders, that are supposed to be protecting us, helping us, guiding us.
Could you finish up?
I will, mahalo. Be the leaders that you're supposed to be for Hawaii, not for America, for Hawaii. Mahalo.
If I can just respond to that real quick. I understand what you're saying. But you know, what's important to understand is that when we get a complaint about someone being on the beach violating the laws and stuff like that, we don't ask the nationality of the person that's calling and making the complaint.
I'm not telling you for how to nationalize. I'm telling you to change the policies.
Okay, can I finish up?
Help us change the policies from the inside out.
Okay, can I finish up?
That's what I'm asking of you. Stop living by the policies that's not ours. Because that's what's messing us up. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. So again, we, you know, believe it or not, we have a lot of Kanaka that also call us because they're not happy about what's happening at the beach and the parks and stuff like that. Ninety, more than 95% of the people that we deal with that are on our beaches are either suffering mental illness or drug or alcoholic problems. I'm pretty sure that in old Hawaii, that wouldn't be accepted either. So again, getting them that help is one thing. Our job as a police department is to enforce the laws of the City Council of Honolulu. And again, it's based on.
Again, that's not ours, yeah.
Okay, but again, you cannot say it's not ours because there's Hawaiians calling as well.
I'm saying that it's not ours.
Okay, but I'm saying that there's Hawaiians that are calling as well that are also asking us for to get the drugs, get the needles, get the human waste, all of that stuff off of the beaches. So we are.
And you think that these policies and these enforcements are helping our people?
Okay, we are not picking and choosing the laws that we enforce. We are enforcing the laws when people call and make a complaint.
Then come and join us, like how I told you guys the last time, you pushed people out of Nanakuli, I'm sorry, of sewers. Yeah, come, you guys that's in your department, come toaina. Come and join us inaina and find out and remember who you are. Because you're forgetting who you are and you constantly uplifting this suppression and oppression that is bringing us down enough already. I'm asking you, I'm inviting you, bring your whole crew, because I tired of these policies. Yeah, I know for myself what self-determination is. You gotta hear this. I'm sorry. Yeah.
I would ask that you move this to committee. I am the chair for parking wrecks next Tuesday.
But this is not all about just parking wrecks. This is about policy. Yeah.
If you're referring to that, I need to ask if you move on from this because this is going to become a discussion and right now there's a lot more people that have community concerns.
Okay, I understand.
Please bring this to committee. I would appreciate that.
This is just an invite to all of you guys that are in government. Aina heals us. Aina reminds us of who we are. You need Aina. We need Aina. So come join us inaina. That's all I asking.
State your name. Speak to the mic, yeah. Yeah, there you go.
My name is Kikaipua. We're with Boki. Can you hear? Come close. Can you hear? Can you hear me now? Okay, aloha. My name is Kikaipua. We're with Boki Farms and Polynesian Belt Music. And I'm like 45 years old this year and Tupula and HPD chief.
Hala mai. So for recording purposes and those online, they cannot hear you. If you can just speak directly into the mic.
That's because.
Mahalo.
I'm like been in this community since like the 80s and we've had farmland. I just want to know what do we need to organize events? Because like the boxing club and Kalahui, Hawaii, and the one that spoke just now, that was my cousin. I'm just like, we've seen so many people come and go through this neighborhood board throughout the years. Uncle William Isla is my parents' cousin. Uncle Vince Dodge, they're longtime community members that have always been with us. So now is our time to kakou and step up for them because we can't be doing the same things. Every Wednesday at Paradise Chavo on Wednesday in Mailea, Maipala Oa, we get over 100 people, houseless, that you guys are talking about. And some people are concerned about the cannabis that kills cancer, but not the meth and the illegal activities that are in our community on every corner. And especially the houseless that come over, a lot of them are hungry and we barely give them like consistent. Sometimes the first week we're out, we don't have, wear clothes. And so, I mean, there's a resource in Mailea at the end by the stream on Kahumana, right? Every day after 12:30. So everybody knows they have vegetables and fruits there, like tents up sometimes twice a day, every day. But we can't like, they're hungry. Some of them, I could walk from Nanakuli to Waimea to in that mountain that's training grounds and crown lands right there that connects. So if you're going to like showcase, and I've been with Disney since I've been 19 years old. And I came home from Florida before it was open, or after it was open, to join that cast. Now we make products for them and we make, we've been consistent with the community. We just need you guys to be consistent with us. And if you need resources, you need funding, money, funding, food, like let's do it. We should bring in more so that that is, that was like when the cousins are talking about tradition. Our people lived in the mountains and the valleys. My cousins on Maui. Kiamoku Kabo is my first cousin. That's Nanakuli. And every Ahupua is different. We should be taking care of our community first. Those houses shouldn't be there. That used to be a fishing spot. It used to have like Uhu. Pad Moy, do we even have those anymore? We need to like recirculate our, our limu is gone from here to other beach. And Kapolei is not going to be the same again after there's so much development. They're pushing everybody out from Akaha this way and we just want to like organize. This is like our time. Usually this time, January 17th, July 31st is Lahu Iho Ieha. And then November 28th, those are the three times a year we have to organize besides the community meeting. And because we didn't have one last month, we just want to make sure that we organize with everybody here too. Mahalo.
Mahalo. State your name.
Thank you. Aloha. My name is Raquel Achu. I am of the Wailea Moku, right over the mountainside here. And I just wanted to share with you all, thank you, Chair and board members and community, something that's affecting our community pretty harshly. And I believe although this mauna of ours physically divides us, it also connects us. And I believe this threat could become one for the West as well. It's very early yet, but we are, the North Shore anyway, is very inundated and overwhelmed with the influx of new residents, tourism, everything, right? So we are being stripped of our way of life and raped of our lands. I am the vice chair of the North Shore Neighborhood Board. I'm also the school council chair for Wailea High School, but I'm also a rancher on this mauna. My husband, over 60 years in that mountain. We are now faced with a developer who has proposed and received a conditional use permit for Mount Kaala for a ski lift gondola and a zip line that will come down the mountain around one of the ridges and back up to a cafe. None of that will benefit our community. I don't think you'll be able to see it from the West side, but just the mere fact of them trying to penetrate and desecrate this mountain of ours, the risk remains and can creep over. So I want to share that with you and make you aware. Anything, if you're interested in more, we are happy to share. You can reach out to myself or also my board chair, Kathleen Pahinui. It's something we are going to aggressively challenge. We have had great support and communication with DPP. This conditional use permit was provided before the current leadership and we're very appreciative for the engagement we've had with DPP and the support that we've gotten from our council member. So I would just put that out there to be aware. The owner purchased 2,300 acres of the mountain from Dole and is trying to do this project. We are confident we can challenge it, but I think we have to do it together. And I just share that with you. If you're interested in helping us or when the time comes to speak out for us as well, we receive that and appreciate the time you've let me. Thank you.
Chair.
You can go to our Facebook, North Shore Neighborhood Board page.
Okohu has a question for you.
Hey Rocky, check, check. Hey Rocky, thanks for coming over to Kohiwi's over Kaala for come over. He's still in the same Ahupua, but I was there in Wahea. Probably was like six years ago and was this gondola stuff that they was talking about and we came up there. And my understanding at the time, we were adamantly cool air against that. So now was it, it's the same developer like six years ago or?
Yes.
So they're still, so they're bringing them back again?
Yes.
Because I think Caldwell was mayor at that time.
Yes, he did not present to the board. He introduced himself in 2018 and acknowledged himself as the new owner of this land. He never came back to the board. We later found out he acquired, he got a conditional use permit. Fortunately, the city planner at the time caught wind of it and placed a serious amount of conditions to be able to apply for building permits, which they have not complied with yet, although they think they do. So.
Is there a petition, Tita?
Not yet.
You're just going to make one?
Yes.
I put my name on that line.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any other information that you can give right now for people that are watching or anybody that's interested?
If you want to reach out to us, you can reach out to me, our Facebook page. My Facebook is just under my regular name, Raquel Achu. Or the North Shore Neighborhood Board page, North Shore Neighborhood Board number 27.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more community concerns? Go ahead.
Austin Salcedo, community concern. Last year, I think it was about timeframe, about September, October. I brought forward the Nanakuli Neighborhood Board Resolution about no kauhalees in our area, in the whole Senate District 22 because of SR 30, a resolution that was approved. Where does our neighborhood board voice and stand on this? Because I don't see it on the minutes on this. We need, I ask for the neighborhood board to take a stance on the resolution and for the YNI Neighborhood Board, like Nanakuli had created this bill. And I brought it a copy to Jeff Jones, but nobody took a stance there on the YNI because there's a lot of state operation that's occurring again behind the intermediate school that's close to the schools. YNI Intermediate and Kamilei Academy, that's preschool to 12th grade. And all this kauhalees that's coming up in the area, Makah got another one, but it's all group living. I don't care what it is, group living, transitional, whatever, it's still the same. No conditional use permit. At least Haleeva Neighborhood Board receives conditional use permit. We don't receive conditional use permit because of Bill 64. Any state operations, they monitor it, they certify it. So where do we stand as far as that resolution? I need, YNI Neighborhood Board need to answer that question because I came up here months and month and month. That's why I ask. If there's any dividing in here, anybody who is affiliated with any kind of nonprofit organizations and all that, as far as the board's concerned, I ask for you to recuse yourself as far as taking a vote on this for group living.
Chair, just to share some manao. Hey Austin, good to see you. So like, I remember when Mizuno came, right? And he was, yeah, and he was, yeah, he was drawing shade, but anyway. So I know that Dana and Tita Nani was trying to acquire that aina that was right next to Mailei's stream. Yeah, for kauhalee. For like, sort of purpose of the kauhalee culturally and that's something that we still need to look at, you know, that I'm interested in. And maybe Dana can share some manao on that.
So the understanding of kauhalee, kauhalee as a Hawaiian framework is a village. It is not a transitional housing program. It is not homelessness. It is not anything. So the hijacking of the use of the word kauhalee is not porno. And so that's why Mizuno is not here, you know? That's why they're not pushing their agenda because we are cultural practitioners. We are about growing YNI and the understanding of kauhalee. So if you submit, this is just me. If you submit something that's suggesting that kauhalee is transitional housing or it is a homeless organized kind of development, from a cultural perspective, it's not. And so two different things. You want to talk about kauhalee, stick within the framework of our understanding as Kanaka. You want to talk about transitional housing, then we talk about transitional housing.
The language itself, I think was misled everyone. It is a group transitional living housing, transitional.
So again, the understanding that I'm coming from, kauhalee is not a transitional housing program. Kauhalee belongs to Kanaka. It's a, it's a Hawaiian word. It means village and we cannot cut out a village from our community because it's existed long before.
Let me explain further. Let me interject there. First of all, you guys. Let me, I'm gonna interject there, um first of all, you guys wait till I address and give you guys permission to to talk. Um that is uh uh something that the board hasn't taken a stance on yet and it's because it's not on an agenda. I can, I can recommend it for next month for it to be put on the agenda. Um I highly recommend you guys attend Mr. Endo's committee meeting, which is the third, third, third Thursday? Third Tuesday, third Tuesday uh of this month. Um he does have an agenda out there. Um you guys have any concerns on Kahali? I highly recommend you guys come to committee so that we can actually take a stance on it or actually look at it. Because we, without dialogue, we can't have the dialogue here. We have to have dialogue in committee.
Yeah, just the definition, it's further than that. Kahali, everybody shares one kitchen, one bathroom, one shower. Many how, many dwellings on the side of it. That's my, that's my definition of how it was explained from the Nankuli Board, so I'm sharing it with everyone as well too. So how the government is taking this conception, the state? I'm just bringing it up to the attention of the board. Yeah, bring it up to the next one.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Austin. Um is there any more community concerns? State, state your name.
Aloha Board, aloha community. My name is Ben Williams. I'm the race director for the Makaha Time Trial. It's a bike race coming up. I apologize, I I intended to come out last month to the meeting and I'm sorry to to hear that the facility was shut down. Um the event is this weekend, so it's very late notice. I I really apologize for that. It's the same event that uh this is like our fifteenth or sixteenth year. We haven't changed anything, but just wanted to come out and uh and share that. Uh residents of the Y-Nai Coast get to participate for free. So if you're interested in coming out, riding bikes, uh it's very family friendly. We've got a great keiki division. They start at ten years old and we can help escort any junior riders that wanna come out. My number is eight zero eight three 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 one one five one. And I'll stick around the meeting also. If you have any questions or interested, please come find me.
Thank you, Ben. Go ahead, Nick.
I'll try to be quick, I promise. Right, Uncle, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just um.
Address the Chair, um you gotta address her.
Okay, 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 then I address the community in in this regards. So understanding what Kahali is, especially because this month is Mahina'olaho Hava'i month. And it's super important for us to understand the language of our ancestors of this place so that we can understand how to better direct and guide the people that don't know what what those words mean to us. Yeah, they're completely different as Dana was sharing. Yeah, and so for us in Y-Nai to understand that, we need to start speaking it. And for us to start speaking it, we need to engage in these classes that are available for us. There's classes here in Y-Nai for you and for you, right? Kawaihona'oko na'aua, Tuesday, Thursday, six to seven thirty, hele'oko. They have a function that's going on on the seventh, I believe, over there as well. Apo'olelo hava'i, aloha'olelo, go. I teach olelo on the comp- on on the punai dele, right? On the computer as well as alulike for our kupunas. Come, engage in olelo because that changes your perspective completely to understand who we are. I'm speaking to all of US community. E'olaka olelo hava'i, e'olaka ko'apau.
Hello.
Aloha, Michael William Capolino Eli. Um my concern is still about Y-Nai Valley, about um over there where they get their big project, but they never bring them to the board. You guys can see it from the homestead if you live in the homestead, cause I can see them when I go up there and I go to Brother Harris's place. I I go up there, they steal drilling there. If the thing is private, okay? They get permits, right? They should bring them to the board and what what can project they gonna build up there? Cause they get, they say they get, I think so ten or fifteen acres, but they never bring nothing to the board. They get heavy equipment up there, drilling all kind. I in a monkey, I just hear Sunday, Saturday, they they always working. Still like get two lots or three lots, get angels and then get the 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 um, they call that, what what? Viscible farm, then get that lot. And that lot used to have an ahu on them, okay? It's gone. There's, you know what they can say in the game already, they can say, oh, that's not our, that's not our our jurisdiction. It's shifty, you know what? The dealing are, they possibly mountain to the sea, no matter shifty or what, over there go investigate and go give them, go look if they get permit. You know what I mean? No matter shifty or what, they possibly doing their job, brah. You know what I mean? They're desecrating and just like Ho'omakewala up there, same thing, they just doza everything. She said, oh, no, we're gonna use machines. You guys not could use machines on your star preservation, no matter if you put them on ag two or ag one. You gotta have an archaeologist on site, you not could just doza and say that that's the thing is ag one, ag two, I don't care. I know what that thing is, all that land is, fourteen hundred acres. Um and then the water supply, please turn on the water, uh second water tank, cause we don't know water up there, then shut them off. Um the meet and ease road behind the roses, they never attend to the meet and ease road for three years already. They only gonna say, oh, the rain, the rain, the rain. Right now rainy season, I think I'll get more jam up the road now. They gotta, they gotta tend to the, that hand, it's three years already. And talking about what she was talking about, the zip line and bungalow houses, that's what the guy was came over here tell us about over there, yeah? That's part of our apua too. Even the dump, what they gonna do in Wailea, they dumped it, they gonna make the the dump, right? That's part of our apua, that's oka, auka. This is Kai, Y-Nai Kai, Y-Nai Uka, I can go all the way to Ko'alaos, that's our. So we we pursue attend to two boards, this board and Wailea. If we like, grumble for that side too, you know what I mean? Cause that's part of our apua.
Finish up, Mike.
You know what I'm saying? Because you know why? It's hundred twenty-eight years since the binding law, yeah? The thing is voiding, so don't know on nothing. They was leasing land from the king. Once the king went pass away, void, everything is voided. I can go right back to the kingdom to Alponi'oko hava'i paina, that's, that's our kingdom, guys, okay? Alponi'oko hava'i paina. Mahalo, aloha.
Mahalo, Mike.
Check, check, all right. Aloha, my kako, o Pikachu ko'inoa, no makali mai al, no ho auai vana'i, mahalo no'ilo for doing community concerns first. I learned olelo vai by taking a class by Kumunani. Luckily, I take notes. So community concerns, I talked to Philip Ganabon, you know, he's a Chair, he works in Chris Moroka's office. We didn't have a meeting last month, the water pipe broke. I don't know, someone took a giant kukai and blew up the pipe or something. But I figure we're gonna have more effectiveness by writing bills on Capitol Hill to get stuff done. We have some agricultural crimes, we drafted the bill. Thanks for having a community meeting with the Tiana's support, the Salseros helped and we drafted some with AI through Mike Gabbert, who's championing the bill. We're trying to utilize Chris Moroka and Samantha DeCort to get stuff done for our people, which is resources, manpower, financing, whatever else we need to get stuff done. Cause you know, they're not treating us fairly. So to give you an update about human trafficking, we have twelve bills, I wrote three of them and we have them going through first readings. There's no one we can, we cannot submit testimony, which is very strange. You can submit testimony about weed, cannabis, coconut rhinoceros beetles, but they won't let you testify in support or even opposition with human trafficking. The bills that Chris Moroka wrote introduce HB four eight three, that means black ops literally. He's, we're gonna get black ops money to support confiscating civil asset forfeiture, all the evil villains kukai and we can redistribute. And I made sure to put into the bill, there's a ten percent, maximum twenty percent. If the Hawaii community reports it, you get a percentage of whatever we confiscate. So we get a hundred million dollar bust of fireworks, drugs, guess what? You get up to ten, twenty percent of that, so we can get this stuff going. I'd rather see this bills coming through, but I'm not sure what they're saying. So for the record, there's HB one one one, HB one five five, HB four eight three, HB six oh nine, HB nine six, HB nine nine three, HB five eight zero. That's for the House. Remember, I have to go to the other side. So on the Senate side, we have Senate two, Senate Bill two oh three, one nine three, two oh sixty-one, four five three and thirteen twelve. So Kurt Favela is on our side, but you know, you have the Republicans and the donkeys, it's like a circus. So we have to put the ring together, grab some peanuts, grab some popcorn, some mochi crunch, so we can have some la'la and some kukaa together. Cause if we just have the meetings every single month, I feel like it's impotent. I'd rather have a baby with some kalua in nine months, I'd rather go Mount Kahala. And so that's my community concerns. Thank you for the two minutes, mahalo.
This will be the last one for community concerns.
Your Highness, Harris Maloia Fuller Junior. Okay, I just like make one, I just like make a, oh, sorry. Your Highness, Harris Maloia Fuller Junior. Just like make one presentation of the flag of hava'i paina. And this is the truth, yeah, we gotta live the truth, that live in the truth because time gonna come where everybody gotta bring their papers, for real. Cause this is all fraud, fake and phony, this state, this now in state, some pirate ship. And we all got hijacked for real. So time gonna come where everybody gotta bring their papers, show proof who they are because this is a whole lot of fraud right now. Yeah, and I get I'm big concern of that property in Y-Nai. That who is this guy? Just come over here and just do what they like without any without any repercussions, because like I said, this is fraud. Who wouldn't let him permit this, what's going on? This is wow, crazy. So, yeah, next month I wanna make a presentation on the flag and hope you guys be there because this is the truth. And uh and the kids, the K kids need to know the truth. Everybody need to know the truth and so we can move on. Yeah, but thank you guys, aloha.
Mahalo. Okay, we're gonna move on to uh presentations. Uh who's this? Installation of new sidewalks in the community, Department of Transportation. The online.
Aloha, yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for having me tonight. I'm sorry that I couldn't be there in person. My name is Kaelin Bubalov and I am a planner with the Department of Transportation Services at the City and County of Honolulu in the Complete Streets office. And I'm going to share my screen now. Okay, can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, perfect. Um so I'm going to talk to you about our walkway project in Y-Nai as part of the Complete Streets team. I'm also joined, I saw that our Complete Streets Administrator Renee Espial is also online with questions afterwards. Um and first I'll get into talking a bit about complete streets, what we do and how we do it. So what are complete streets? Complete Streets is a roadway design approach that provides safe facilities for people of all ages and abilities, whether where they're walking, using a wheelchair, on a bike, riding transit or in a car. It also says that there are other functions of a street outside of transportation, that they are places for businesses to welcome customers, neighbors to get to know each other, kids to play and ecosystems for plants and trees to grow. So this is kind of a generic image of what complete streets can look like in more of an urban setting, but they can look very different depending on the context of the street and the neighborhood. And Honolulu has a complete streets law which was passed back in two thousand and twelve. Basically, it says that we must consider complete streets and design our roads for all roadway users every time we touch a transportation facility, whether it's a large scale construction project or a smaller scale maintenance project. And the list of bullet points below shows all of the reasons why we do this work, whether it's to improve safety and accessibility, um encourage opportunities for physical activities, build partnerships with organizations and stakeholders like you, um or incorporate trees and landscaping. And it's always a combination of all of those. And so for the Y-Nai's Walkway Project, we began working on this um this past fall of two thousand and twenty-four. Um it's a part of a package of six different sidewalk projects in different areas across the island. And we know that there has been tremendous need and demand for better sidewalks on Oahu, but there has never been dedicated funding for this purpose. So we're excited to have established funding for this program and to work with you all to finally install this important pedestrian infrastructure that's been needed for so long. So this project proposes to improve pedestrian safety and accessibility along four corridors in Y-Nai. Um and these are Plantation Road, Mill Street, MacArthur Street and Lu'alulele Homestead Road. These streets were selected for this project as they were identified in the Oahu pedestrian plan as highest need sidewalk gaps. They ranked highest priority in the plan because of their proximity to elementary schools. Um for, in this case, it's why uh Y-Nai Elementary School and Lehoku Elementary School. And they were, they're selected because of their crash history, what, which we'll get into um later on. And because they are on bus routes, their direct connections to major streets like Farrington Highway uh as well as connections to parks and other community destinations. And so we inventoried the existing conditions and recorded the types of pedestrian infrastructure that does exist. Uh we also identified community facilities in the area and did some initial background data. We saw that there are almost thirteen hundred students enrolled at the two elementary schools. Um so there are a lot of kids using these streets to get back and forth between their home and school. There are also fourteen bus stops um along our, uh within our project extents and they serve two circulator bus routes. And we've also seen a lot of speeding. We've seen speeds up to fifty to fifty-five miles per hour on both Lu'alulele Homestead Road and Plantation Road and up to forty miles per hour on Mill Street. Um and all of these streets have twenty-five mile per hour speed limits. So there are uh safety concerns on these streets because of speeding and other factors. This is a heat map that shows crash density on our project streets by mode of transportation. Tragically, in the past six years, there have been two fatalities due to motor vehicle crashes. One at Plantation and Ho'opu'i Street and another at Y-Nai Valley Road and Mill Street. And between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty-two, there were also six pedestrian or bike crashes and eleven moped and motorcycle crashes. And data collection and analysis has also been done as part of the Oahu pedestrian plan and it found that island-wide pedestrians are involved in about thirty-six percent of all fatal crashes. And safety concerns for pedestrians can include missing sidewalks. Um if sidewalks are missing, pedestrians are forced into the street alongside moving traffic. Crosswalks can also be unsafe and inaccessible due to speeding cars, low visibility and a lack of traffic control devices. And there are also environmental safety concerns for pedestrians like excessive heats because of the lack of shade and inadequate lighting at night. In addition to pedestrian safety concerns, there are also safety issues for people using other modes of transportation, including bicyclists, drivers, moped riders and transit riders. We also know that speed is a contributing factor in over a third of all the crashes on Oahu. And so how do we create safe streets for all users? The solution is twofold. Uh number one is providing dedicated and protected facilities for non-vehicular travel. So this could come in the form of sidewalks and bike lanes that separate pedestrians and bicyclists from um moving cars. The second is limiting opportunities for speeding. We know that humans make mistakes and that these mistakes shouldn't cause fatalities and serious injuries. So the best way to reduce the chances of this is to bring down those vehicle speeds. In this graphic, you can see that if you are a pedestrian walking and you are hit by a car going twenty miles per hour, you have about a ninety percent chance of survival. However, if you're walking and you're However, if you're walking and you're hit by that same car going just over double the speed at forty-five miles per hour, you only have a chance of ten uh ten percent chance of survival. So the fatality rate increases exponentially as speeds increase. And so now we'll show some of the tools we're considering using as part of this project. And that includes speed humps and raised crosswalks. These can help reduce uh speeds down to fifteen to twenty miles per hour depending on their steepness. Uh, we're also looking at curb extensions to help reduce the length of a pedestrian crossing and make pedestrians more visible to drivers. We are considering different types of sidewalks, including uh those with curbs as is already out there on MacArthur Street, as well as at grade sidewalks with berms like this example in Eva Beach. Um, we're also considering shared use paths that provide space for both bikes and pedestrians separated from traffic. We are considering traffic circles and singling roundabouts specifically at one location in particular. Um, these are proven to reduce intersection collisions by more than seventy percent. Mainly because force drivers to slow down and yield to circulating traffic, minimizing the risk of head-on and angle crash, right angle crashes. And lastly, we're looking to plant street trees and provide landscape buffer um to help provide some shade and comfort for pedestrians and bicyclists walking and biking in the area. And so we have drafted some preliminary concepts uh which we will be posting on our website for community input this week. And I'll go quickly go through um some of them, but I can also send an email to Chair Kanabun um with these attached. So for Mill Street, we're looking to fill in sidewalk gaps. So that's the orange dotted line um in the graphic. We're also looking to plant shade trees, install traffic calming features like speed humps um as well as install a roundabout specifically at Y N I Valley Road and Mill Street. On Plantation Road, we're considering a shared use path on the school side of the street. So this is the green dotted line in the graphic. Uh, we're also looking at new sidewalks and crosswalks as well as traffic calming features like speed tables and curb extensions closer to Farrington Highway. And on MacArthur Street, we're mainly considering filling in sidewalk gaps to better connect pedestrians to the backside of Y N I Elementary School. And lastly, on Lualulele Homestead Road, we're considering filling in sidewalk gaps on one side of the street um closest to Farrington Highway. We're also looking at constructing a shared use path on the north side of the street. Um. This is the green and orange dotted lines in the graphic as well as planting shade trees and um installing traffic, traffic calming features like speed tables and raised crosswalks. And so we need your input to make sure the project responds to the needs of all roadway users in the community. As mentioned, I'll post them uh the concepts online and email Chair Kanadon. We're also open to having an additional meeting with the Transportation Committee or a standalone format um to go over the concepts in more detail if that's of interest. Um, and right now in the timeline, we are right here in community outreach and feedback at the very beginning of this process. And that is all for me. Thank you very much for your time. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Uh, anybody from the board? Uh, Joe Jordan?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I have some questions. I'm very familiar with each one of these projects. So uh first question I will have is Y N I Valley Road. Going up Y N I Valley Road, maybe two and a half years ago, DTS sent out a letter to almost every property owner going up Y N I Valley Road that you were considering speed humps on Y N I Valley Road. Is that part of your planning as well?
Kalen, I can jump in. Um.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Board. Renee S P O, Complete Streets Administrator for City and County. Um, is Kelly on? No. Kalen, can you see her? Um, we have done a design for that and I believe we're looking for resources. Um, and a way to implement it. We don't have um money to build it right now. So let me follow up on that and uh maybe we can send a separate communication on a status of that, but um, that's my understanding is that it's been designed. Um. We may have put it into one of our uh T E D V L packages with some other projects that may in the design phase um and have requested future funding. Um, so I wouldn't expect it too soon, but I can definitely follow up and see when um we can expect that to come when the funding's available.
Okay, I appreciate that response. Secondly, going up Plantation Road. Uh, you're considering speed humps over there? That is the Makaha end of Y N I Elementary School between Pilila Al Park and the elementary school?
Yes, yep.
Yes, you are?
Yes, yep, in that section confronting the park and the elementary school.
How many speed tables?
We're still in early concept design, so um I think right now we have four, three or four. Um, but it's still early days, so that's up for discussion. If you have comments on that, we're open to hearing.
Okay, and then you'll be putting speed tables on MacArthur, which is the other end of the school, correct?
We did not propose speed tables on MacArthur. Uh, we haven't seen speeding there.
Okay, because that's one-way traffic during school hours.
Okay. Yep.
Um. I think um going up Lualulele, there is currently on the Honolulu side halfway up Lualulele, a raised crosswalk cement. Are you planning on extending that raised cement crosswalk, which is four feet wide, all the way up to Le Hoku Elementary?
We are looking at uh traffic calming features like raised crosswalks or speed humps. I'm not familiar with the particular one.
On Lualulele Homestead Road?
Yes, yep.
Our traffic, sorry, this is Renee again. Our traffic engineering group also has a traffic calming project on Lualulele Homestead Road that we're coordinating with to make sure, you know, um, our plans are consistent and I believe theirs will be coming first. Um, so maybe we can include that in our update with the Y N I Valley Road um humps as well.
That would be nice because I think that was presented to the board almost two years ago. So it'd be nice to get an update on that, that traffic calming measure for Lualulele Homestead Road.
Yeah.
Mahalo. Mahalo, Chair.
Uh, Uncle Richard?
Thank you. Uh, thank you for your report. Uh, but in uh two thousand twelve, fourteen, and sixteen, there was uh uh, we had a team that came from Department of Transportation coming down here for uh complete streets. And uh at the time, um, there was a removal of uh certain crosswalks and then there were um uh adjustments on bus stops. And then there was uh some uh rumor, I guess, that they was going to do a lot of work for our um ADA people at crosswalks or sidewalks where um they the their wheelchairs or their walkers wouldn't fit because of the telephone poles and stuff, but nothing was ever done. So. Um, I I'm hoping it it's not just a wish list that we're having again because it's been uh uh quite a long time. And uh we we haven't received anything, you know, at um uh at the Y, uh Nanakuli um a mall there, they were supposed to help us with with ADA uh sidewalks that uh that home, that uh apartment building they had. Yeah, back there we have a lot of seniors. And they have a problem when they cross the street to try to catch the bus. So we would appreciate any real help that would come down on our side. Thank you.
Yes, if I can respond to that real quickly, um. When Complete Streets was passed as a law, unfortunately, they didn't give it much resources. Um, it was sort of a concept without a lot of money. Um, and there was a lot of community walk audits. I think expectations raised that um did not have a lot of follow-through. We did it in Wahihua as well. I apologize. So it was sort of before my time. Um, that said, um, with the I I J A, they had, you know, this recent um round of large federal funding for transportation. We realized that that was sort of our first chance to get a bunch of money for complete streets, like in a significant way for Oahu. And we had just done the new pedestrian plan and so we knew we needed a lot of sidewalk work and um we made sure that our first project was in Y N I. Um, this is literally the city's first sidewalk project funded completely publicly, probably ever in our existence. And the first one is in Y N I and this is the first uh board actually we've gone to out of the six projects that we started with this round. So I apologize. Um, and I hear you. And this is federal money. Um, we've we've got it. We're on the tip. Uh, we're doing real engineering and so hopefully the money will be there when we get ready for construction as well.
Um, Board Member Tiana Wobber.
I did uh email you in the chat if we can continue offline for sake of time. I just want one clarification. Has this any partnership with the Safe Routes to School project as well? Okay. Thank you. I know we've had a lot of discussions on this, so I will, I'll definitely stay in communication with you guys and look forward to seeing you in our Transportation Committee. Mahalo.
Board Member Dana Newman and Mr. Endo.
Sorry, the question that I would have would be in regards to sustainability. Um, our community's sustainable plan in in terms of what the city, the city planning and how it relates to this type of infrastructure kind of buildup and what is the carrying capacity of our community in terms of, you know, is this being built as a mechanism to further develop the coast, further gentrify our community? You know, if it's to replace, to make things look nice so that we can sell property and move other people in, then that might be a problem.
So I personally worked on um transit-oriented development planning for ten years in D P P, which is where we did all the development planning around all the rail stations. Um, and so I've worked in development planning for a long time. Uh, this is not that at all. This is trying to acknowledge um where we may have not um done a fair share of investment over previous decades um and trying to help Kiki get to school. Um, it it, there's really no diabolical uh plot behind this except just trying to invest money in our communities that need it. Um, and if you don't think the projects are needed, let us know. There are plenty of communities that need sidewalks and that need work. Uh, but you know, I I read the Neighborhood Board minutes every month and I have for many, many years. And so the streets you see on there are streets that we have heard from you guys. Um, so my understanding is that they are needed. Um, Kalen's a very capable, smart planner. We're lucky to have her on this project. Um, and we're excited to work here. Um, so we want to hear positive as well as negative back from you guys.
Again, the question again stems from that area. We have two public housing projects. We have a lot of poor people living in the space. You know, that need to continue to either live in the space. But we don't need to be gentrified. That's the only concern that I would have.
I hear you.
Staying there.
Um, couple things. Um, those two schools that you focusing on right now, I mean, this, the sidewalks and stuff is is nice. The the, the main problem, I think you're addressing is the speeding and around the school. Um, I prefer instead, what I found uh in my all communities in Palolo and Kamaki uh Makiki. They went to the the circles, the traffic circles more than the bumps because you cannot speed around the circles. And um so those two, two schools you focusing on right now, those intersections, I'm thinking the traffic circles might be a better thing to slow our Y N I drivers down because I've seen guys fly over those bumps. Uh. And the the second thing I had was, um. We have other elementary schools that are way, way unsafe around the schools because there's no sidewalks in in a sense and kids are and parents are walking on the street because of it. So I hope you're gonna be looking at the other elementary schools in our area.
Are there any in particular? Sorry. Are there many elementary schools?
Um. Um, my my, my Ailey is probably the worst of the worst. Um. And my car, because of uh the the way the it's paved, kind of paved like sidewalks, but but the bad bad thing is people think it's 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 not sidewalks, it parking lots, so it forces people on the street. Um, the other one I was looking at recently was Kamali, uh uh just on one side going going up the the street to the school. Uh, you have a nice sidewalk on one side, but the other side is uh dirt. And if it rains, uh, I I've seen people walking under the road. So those are the three that comes to my mind right now.
Thank you.
Chair, just one comment really quickly. Um, Mahalo for being here, uh, DTS. And so just to address some of the concerns coming from board and then also if any community has these concerns, these particular areas was concerns that have been probably generational that has been coming to the board. Uh, when I was privileged to pass on, get the baton passed down to me from the transportation. Uh, previously, this was the same concerns. I've had late nights with grandparents and parents of these particular areas just in frantic because their animals got banged or they're worried for their children's safety or their grandchildren's safety. So this is absolutely concerns of the community and the one thing I appreciate right now is the fact that I believe right now in this moment, we are finally being heard. We are finally, the inequities that we've seen all my life, right? And all these generations is 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 being heard. And yes, we will continue to to be vigilant to not allow gentrification and things to happen on our coast. That we, that we have to cackle together to ensure that that doesn't happen. But these concerns and the things that they're addressing and putting in safe routes to school is something that our community has constantly been battling to to see equality here on our side. Because our kids are constantly walking on the streets or you know what I mean? Like there's not a safe route to school. And finally, there is this added funding and I'm so grateful that we are the first of the crop and we weren't second thought or way in the back like we normally are. So I do appreciate the discussions and I encourage everybody to continue these discussions and bring to committees and bring these, these discussions have to have happen. The kuka kuka has to happen so that we can be the best representatives for our community and what it is that we want. And this is something that we have been asking for, for generations and for our Kiki today, not ten, twenty years from now, because that was told to us four years ago when they repaved Lahaina Street because they're all considered capital investment under privately owned, all these excuses. We couldn't get sidewalks. We couldn't get these things. And within two years, this project has been is is coming to fruition. So just stay encouraged and stay engaged. If you guys could just stay engaged and and um continue these discussions. Mahalo.
Um, thank you, Tiana. Um, I have one concern regarding uh uh Plantation and Pilila Al Park. Uh, if you guys decide to do any type of raised sidewalks or anything in that area, there the that is our only regulated football field on this whole entire coastline and it's highly used. So if you guys decide to s- um block up parking, there's there's gonna be a huge mess. There's, it's gonna limit a lot of parking. That parking lot there is really small. So consider the fact that when you see those, those, those fringes where all the dirt on the side of the road, that's cars all the way up to the bridge on both sides of the road and just have that, that consideration that, that we don't have the land and infrastructure for, to accommodate the parking. So, you know, keep us, the community in mind. And one more thing, the Mill Street, the view of Mill Street. When, when you're doing a presentation and, and people have the idea of gentrification, it would be good that you retake that picture because in that picture it has a for sale sign. And yeah, people get the wrong message on that because, you know, you just, that's a house that's just been recently remodeled and ready to flip. So you, you, you guys are actually giving the wrong impression right now with that photo. But thank you for your presentation. We're gonna be moving on for sake of time. Thank you guys for your time. Representative Maroka.
Hi, Board. Good evening. Thank you for letting me do this presentation. You know, everybody always get so much negative. We, we get plenty of problems in Waianae and that's the reason I step forward and, and run for this position so I can do my best to help and fix them. And in light of that, I wanted to bring some positive to our community. So if we can get everybody to come inside, we get three really big, really big deals. Yeah, because as you guys can see, if everybody turn over here to the opening, majority of these, these individuals coming in is, is Kiki, is our kids, is our future.
Have them come inside over here behind the, behind the street.
Everybody, everybody come inside. Everybody come inside. Hey, all you guys, all you guys, come inside. Bring your pretty faces, your handsome faces. Come inside, guys. Show them what the future of Waianae looks like. Everybody come inside. Yeah, we have Pikachu move over. Okay, so like I said, in light of all of the negativity we get going on in our community, we're gonna bring, we're gonna bring a whole bunch of positive. This is the future of Waianae. And they're led by some, some really, really exceptional individuals. We're gonna start, we're gonna start with West Side Striking. West Side Striking is a boxing and kickboxing club based in Waianae, comprised of athletes ranging from six to sixty who share a passion for martial arts. The club emphasizes the art of striking to cultivate skill, discipline. It is owned by Michael Tololotu.
Representative.
Mike Tololotu is a former.
Representative Maroka, you, you, sorry, you gotta present that. You gotta feast the board and.
Michael Tololotu is a former kickboxing amateur champion who has developed numerous national and world champions under his guidance. The club's motto, Train Hard, Fight Easy, reflect Coach Mike's unwavering commitment to instilling a strong work ethic, passion and passion in his athletes while fostering humility and care for others through community service events such as food drives and beach cleanups. These efforts not only create exceptional athletes, but also compassionate individuals who will one day grow up and be successful community members. West Side Striking was recognized by USA Boxing as the number one gym. Not in Hawaii, not in the state, but in the nation. The number one gym right here in Waianae. Coach Mike. So on behalf of the thirty-third legislator in the state of Hawaii, we want to present this plaque to Coach Mike and all of his young fighters. Thank you, Coach Mike. Thank you, young, young ladies and gentlemen. Keep up the fight. Listen to your coach. Okay? Coach Mike, you want to tell him anything?
Yeah, like to say, thank you guys for having us. Our kids over here and recognizing their accomplishments. And thank you guys for supporting all our fundraisers. Because if it wasn't for you guys supporting us, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. Yeah, so to say thank you, guys. And this all goes to the kids because they're the ones got a lot of victories for us, yeah. So to make, recognize Waianae, actually. Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Former professional boxers Ricky and Hannah Tengaro, Tengaro, have selfishly dedicated their time and expertise to training the next generation of champions in their backyard gym at home in Waianae, Oahu. While balancing full-time careers at Hawaiian Electric and raising five children, Ricky and Hannah formed HR Boxing, which has become a sanctuary for young athletes, providing discipline, mentorship and opportunities for success. Through the Tengaro's tireless efforts, the gym has produced numerous national champions, earning a reputation as a hub of talent and dedication. Beyond producing champions in the ring, HR Boxing instills the value of hard work, discipline, perseverance, and love in its athletes. The Tengaros have cultivated a safe and nurturing environment, inspiring young boxers to excel in not only their sport, but in their life. And like West Side Striking, HR Boxing was recognized as the number three gym, the USA Boxing in the nation. Right here in Waianae. Coach Ricky, Coach Hannah, thank you.
We'd like to thank everybody from Waianae representing the West Coast, especially where we come from. Come from a lot of negative. It's good to have a lot of positive, a little positive coming out of this negative. And like me and Coach Mike, we all came from Waianae Boxing Club, fought underneath Fred Pereira. And he, his legacy will continue through us. We carry on throughout Waianae because Papa Fred is Waianae and that's what we are. We bleed red and blue.
Thank you, Coach Ricky. And I'm glad Coach Ricky helped me segue right into the last, the last group. We bleed red and blue. Imoa, Team Waianae. The last group we got over here is the Waianae Juniors, excuse me, the Waianae Sea Riders JV Football Team, who went undefeated. Undefeated last season. The football team is led by Coach Tyler Fabral, Coach Mike Simpson, Coach Ernest, Coach Bronson. I see Coach Ty, you skipped a rest of the coaches away. Where they at? But more importantly, more importantly, we get wonderful, wonderful leaders. But this is the future. We will bring a championship back to Waianae. We will. Coach Tyler and, and the rest of his coaches have instilled the leadership model, leave no rock unturned, demonstrating tireless dedication, a strong work ethic and an unwavering commitment to excellence, both on and off the field. Not only did they go undefeated, not one of their children, excuse me, not one of their student athletes failed a class. So not only we win in on the field, we teach in these young, young men to win in the classroom. Coach Ty?
I just want to thank our community, thank all you guys, especially our parents. But our parents, these guys is the ones, that's the ones who run our youth, is these guys. Our football coaches, go easy to work with these guys. These guys did whatever we needed to do to make sure we could come up with the outcome in a classroom, on the field and out in our community. And then our main ingredient is our boys. They work, nonstop work. All of this, they know they're heading in the right direction. This is just one of the steps in their journey because they like it to the next level. They like, they like continue using their football talent for that way they can make it and get one degree or pursue whatever they're pursuing. Just want to thank our boys, thank our coaches, thank, thank you all the community. Thank you, guys.
Chris, Chris, if I, if I may, yeah, I know they won the division championship, but there's so much more that they two thousand and twenty-four, in the spring, they were the thirteen and fourteen youth champions. They were also in the spring, they were JPS Gold Division Champions, which is a, that's national. They were also, the, the, the big men on the five-on-five lineman's challenge, rumble on the, rumble on the rocks were champions. They had the D1 National Championship. On top of the, the JV Championship and it's also, they're the twenty twenty-five Highland Hawaii High School Division Champions. They just won that, what, last weekend? Yeah, so awesome job, guys.
Yeah, so you know, you know, when we come to these meetings, when I go to the Big Square building over there, which is a disaster, so much negativity, so much negativity. That's why initially we thought about having this at the, at the Capitol, but I felt like this was more deserving to do it home here in front of the community. That way everybody can see that we get a lot of positives. Uprising. We get a lot of good positives coming up. Thank you to all the parents, coaches, and especially thank you to you boys. Thank you to you guys who work you guys' butts off. Guys show up every day, do your work, stay humble and never forget where you guys from, right? Board, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We'll take a five-minute recess so that we can let the excitement happen and we can move on from there without disruption. We're back to order. Next presentation is a special use permit by Lohkahi Bible School.
Aloha. My name is Ralph Launa. I am the head minister for Community of Christ. And our property is located up in Lululea Valley Road. We have ten and a half acres there. And it's also called Lohkahi Center and everything. And so our, our property currently has, we lease out to the Ma'o Farm. And they have about four, four and a half acres that they use. And then the other part is for the church use and everything. And so we're here to gain your support for the relocation of Ma'iliku Kahii, the school that is located in Nanakuli area. And they are requesting to relocate to our property there in Lohkahi Center. So now I'm going to turn it over to the school to help have them share about their desire to relocate and about the school itself.
Ralph, could, could you give us an address for that, for Lohkahi?
The address is eighty-six dash two-one-zero Ujavei Road. We've been there for over fifty years. So I'll turn it over to Polly.
Aloha. Thank you for having me this, us this evening. My name is Polly Vidat. I'm the research acquisition coordinator at Ma'iliku Kahii. This is Poina Ole, one of the kumus that work there. We just wanted to come tonight to share what our mission is and basically what, why we're trying to relocate. Right now, we have about seventeen students and the students that usually graduate from Punanaleo, we are kind of graduating, extend out to Ma'iliku Kahii. We are a satellite school from Navahi, which is located in the Big Island. And so part of that process to relocate is to find something that we can actually grow and become sustainable. And being on the community church property would be able for us to grow. And also because of the farm, we would be able to do, work, have the Kiki's work in the farm as well. But that's what we wanted to come tonight to gain support from the community and share with you folks what we want to perpetuate. We also have these literatures that we created, more information about the school. And then I'll turn it over to Kumu, Poina Ole.
Aloha, Nui. Akako ovauihano o Poina Ole Larito. He kumu vau ma kapapahana o Ma'iliku Kahii. Kahii, alela he, I am also a parent. My two Kiki go there. They graduated from the, went through the Punanaleo o Waianae, graduated from there and then continued on to Ma'iliku Kahii. And so mahalanaui, I've heard a lot of great information that I needed to hear tonight. You know, I'm from Nanakuli and so I can resonate with a lot of the inequities, inequalities on this side, yeah, compared to other moku. And I heard a lot of, a lot of words that resonated with me as far as cultural, you know, having our Kiki, how do we, how do we guide our Kiki? And that is something that kapapahana o Ma'iliku Kahii can offer. We are a Hawaiian medium education program, which means that we we teach through Olaloha Vaii and, let me just try and move this thing a little bit up. Mahalo ana kala. And so wanting to bring this to the community in potentially relocating at the community church property, we would bring impact to the community. And that's what it sounds like, that, not that there's a lack of, maybe just you know, helping our, our people connect back to not just the cultural, not language, but to each other. And so this is something that we feel would impact our community in a positive way amongst the positive that's already happening. So this gives the community an opportunity to immerse themselves in a unique way, in a way that is ours, in a way that we can resonate with, in a way that we that we can learn from, right? Because better, better to be us than to have to bring somebody from outside to tell us. And that is something that we would like to offer to the community because that's what I've heard tonight. And so I hope that this aligns with not just the values, the culture, the language and bringing all of that back, but bringing light to what our Aina, what Hawaii is supposed to look like, it's supposed to sound like. We gotta have people in these, gotta have people of the community in the community, right? Being the ones to pass this down from generation to generation because we all are aware that history tells us differently. And so I'm sure, you know, we're a small school. I'm sure there would be some concerns as far as traffic and, and whatnot. And we would like just to get the opportunity to show you folks that we would be more of a benefit than something that would impact us in a negative way. Yeah. Mahalanaui for, for listening. The room got real quiet. You guys are making me nervous now. I mean, yeah, Olaloha Vaii is definitely a part of our goal, but we like to also emphasize moliola. And when we talk about mauliola, we're talking about kumu honoa mauliola. Yeah, the four aspects. Olelo, lavena, ike kuuna, and pili ohane. And so we don't ever look at these things as separate. They are all one. Yeah, they all coincide and they, they, um, help us to reach a balance. And from a lot of the mana'o I've heard tonight, there is definitely an imbalance. So we're hoping that we can, we're, yeah, and I keep Polly has flyers that we can pass out to you folks to get more information on the kula. Uh, we welcome all community members and their keiki to, to enroll into our kula because in that way we can impact more families, we impact the, the intergenerational, right? Not just our keiki, but also nourishing their makua, their kukuna, so that they can upkeep as well. And that's what we have for you folks. That is what we can offer. And I'm hoping that with your support, we can be able to reconnect ourselves to ina, to language, to culture, especially to spirituality. Pili ohane is what, um, is what ho'okele is what helps us to navigate the inner work that needs to take place. And there's a lot of healing that has to take place. And so we'd like to be a part of that healing process and solution oriented of how we can better our community. Mahalo Nui.
Uh, I, I have a, a couple of questions and concerns. Um, I think, uh, I think Ralph, you're gonna have to go back to them right there. Um, I know you mentioned traffic, um, for safety and so that. What is, what's a timeframe that you guys are, um, planning on having this, uh, be in operation?
For the school to, uh, to move there?
Yes.
Uh, at Lohkahi. Um, they want to move as soon as possible because their time at, where they're at currently is, um, my understanding was at the end of this school year, yeah? Is that correct?
Uh, we don't really have a time, uh, uh, we don't, we don't have, necessarily have a deadline, but we would like to, uh, move before the next school year so that the new graduates will be, be able to, um, house all the students who's coming aboard. So we might be like outgrowing our space soon, yeah?
And then the other concern is that, um, you have a neighboring, uh, uh, farm that is, um, also leasing part of your guys' property. Um, you know, there's equipment, there's, um, fertilizers they use and stuff like that. Could you, um, uh, go on the record, share like what, what kind of precautions would you guys be doing so that you don't have a child wandering off? Or, um, or if, um, or what, if there is any chemicals, I know this is Ma'au farm, so I'm pretty sure there.
Ma'au is all organic, so, um, they're, they don't use any pesticide or any form of that. Um, and the plan is for, um, that since Ma'au's right next door and they own that property, they could come onto our property in the back and then they could just go straight to where they're farming. So they wouldn't come, um, to the lower part of our property where, um, the buildings are. They'll stay up Malka side of the, the property. So there shouldn't be any interference or any problem with, uh, with, with the school and, and Ma'au farms.
And will there be any interaction, um, with Ma'au as far as the farming is concerned or, or, um, teaching?
That was one of the things the school, uh, had talked about is how they could also, uh, interact and, and, uh, helping their, uh, students to, um, know about farming and what's involved in, in all of that and everything. So I, I'm, I do believe between Ma'au and the school, there will be a lot of, um, interaction and support.
Uh, Mr. Endo has a couple of questions.
So just for your information, Pastor Ralph came to my committee meeting the other week. Um, so he shared with us what's going on. Actually, they're here just, um, because of the permitting process. So, so he, he's one of the few people that I, I know of that has come. He's actually having to just modify his special use of permit because he, his permit already allows him to have a preschool. Uh, so for now that he's adding on the, the, this, uh, immersion school and older kids. That, that's mainly the main reason he's here. The city, as a courtesy, wanted him to inform us that he's putting in for, for a modification order, his special use permit. So he can add on the older kids for the immersion school. If, if, if any of you haven't been up, up at Ma'au Farms way in Waianae Valley. Um, I'm very familiar because I had to take my grandkids so many times. Uh, and the property i- is ideal because, like you said, now Ma'au has to use their regular entrance. Uh, when the school is in operation, you cannot come through his side, uh, when, when once the school opens. So, so it's, it's gonna be a safe. And I'll, I'll tell the pastor Ralph, and, and, you, you, you guys weren't there, but I, I think if you, you, you talk with Ma'au, I think it's gonna become a perfect fit because they, they like to, uh, do internships with the high school, right? So I'm thinking, you guys talk story. Those students can help mentor your students as, as well as learning the farming as well. So, so I, I think it's gonna work out really, really well. Um, the other thing I want to do, I, I've been on this board a long, long time. And my big issue, for, for those who've been around, Waianae is the biggest Hawaiian population in the world. And my gripe, when I, I, I came from Palolo Housing, right? So Anuinoi School was above the housing. So one, one day when I, once I took over this education community, I heard all Hawaiian kids are going to Palolo Anuinoi School because it's a Hawaiian immersion school. I said, what? Our Hawaiian kids have to go two-hour drive all the way in the back of Palolo. Something is wrong with this picture. And I still upset at Oha and Kamehameha Schools because they, they still are not supporting people like you. And I'm hoping those kids that are still going to Anuinoi hear about you guys and, and start and come to your school instead of having to. So, so I, I ask God's blessing on, on you guys and what you're doing because it, it's a vital thing to continue, uh, the culture. It, it, to me, it's important.
Uh, go to Joe Jordan and Dana. Um, I, I asked you guys just, um, make the questions directed to what, what, um, they're, they're gonna do for the sake of time.
So mahalo for coming tonight. This has been a long time coming. I really appreciate it. I've worked with former kumu Eli. So a couple of questions. The Punanaleo portion is not your portion, right? The, the preschool will remain where it's at, right? Only Ma'iliku Kahi, which is the charter school from K to eighth grade?
Currently, we are K through sixth grade, but we are looking forward to expanding and growing. So eventually to eighth grade, yes.
So eventually you'll petition the com- the commission to go up to eighth grade, correct? The chartered school commission.
Right, right now we're, we are, we, we are K through eight, okay. But just as far as student body, we're K through six.
You, you just go K from six, okay.
Right now, my ka'i.
So, um, this is gonna be a great benefit for our community because someday we will have preschool to high school. Olelo, you know, um, so I appreciate you folks wanting to come into Waianae. You know, you've been in Nanakuli for quite some time and I'm, you know, we all know you guys was gonna grow. And, and thank you Pastor for allowing them to have this discussion with you. Um, I think the only concern we would have is hopefully you can get the conditional use permit to allow them to get there so they can start their new school year. I, I think that's the most need for them at this time. And hopefully you guys can have your conversations with Ma'au to do that pathway for our keiki. And I, I hope at some point in time we can get to twelfth grade, maybe? My ka'i, my ka'i.
The goal.
Yeah. So, um, how long do you plan to stay at the site with your goal being going to K to twelve? Meaning at, at the, at the church's site, how long can you stay there?
At this point, we, we're very much open to them and we know that it's a need in the community. And the church feels that this will be beneficial to, um, to our community here in Waianae.
Even if they add the additional four grades?
Yeah, even if they add on.
Okay, mahalo to you. Um, just, I did attend Mr. Endo's committee, so I've heard most of your information. But I, I'm really glad you're here this evening because most of my questions was geared towards you guys. Mahalo.
Cherokee, can I just share?
Dana's next, and then you go.
Aloha, no. So just the, the questions that I would have was, again, the timeline of the increase in student body. How many students are you looking to serve in that space?
Can't say that we have an exact number. Uh, the current student body is seventeen students. And then our Punanaleo O A Anai graduates, they hold a preschool age classroom, call them, pre-kindergarten classroom of twenty. Um, but there are also other kula Olaloha Vai in the area, and so we look at those numbers as well. I, call them, I don't really have an answer for that except for.
If you had to, Wanana, if you had to Wanana.
Call them, I.
If you had to prophesize what, what do you foresee as the population of students in that space?
Oh goodness, five hundred?
Yeah.
Elimahaneli, oya kamea e makemakei, or kenui ihiki, um, ak'a makaheka nana valeana ina helu, makemakei nana fu, ika kenui epai kekaya ulu. Uh, alela, alelo ka'oka helu, numbers are very important, of course, in a school. Yeah, but our, our program is unique to a certain type of ohana that is needing the kind of support that we can provide.
Here, you're my number. You just have seventeen?
Right now we have seventeen.
So that increase in, um, you're gonna start with the K through eight, possibly up to next school year, a hundred?
Uh, I, I'm not sure if it would be a hundred. I, I'm assuming it would grow little by little and then over time.
And this is just to ask because I live right down the street.
Mm-hmm.
And impact to community and how we can support that impact. Because, you know, I'm an advocate of Olelo Hawaii. And how we're gonna awama kuleana is important.
Yeah.
You coming into the space is one thing, but how you utilize the space and how you give back to, to all of us is also important.
Kakao, we definitely, um, look for reciprocal relationships. Yeah, we know just come take or come make house without giving back and, and being of service to the community. And so of course we consider that in everything that we do, uh, currently we hold, um, Hui Kipai Pi, which is a family engagement um, opportunity for families of the Punanaleo O A Anai and Kapapahana o Ma'iliku Kahi to come together and engage in Papa Olaloha Vai. And so that is also open to the community. Um, but for future events maybe or some kind of community collaboration with the community, those are all definitely open. Uh, we, we are definitely open to that. So however, we can reciprocate that, Pilina.
Uh, Kakao, um, for the sake of time, make this a quick one and then, uh, we gotta, we're gonna have to move on.
Mahalo Nui, na kumu, I'm a Kahou, um, for coming, you know, coming to the board and sharing this presentation for me. A ho'ama'ka olaloha Vai, you know, um, I have two, that's a great, um, venue up there, Kahou, because I, I was working up there with Vahikanahu and Uncle Wade Lee and, you know, some, some years back, but I, that's a great facility for this now hamana. So I applaud you folks and whatever we can do, you know, as board members or even as this community member, so Kakao, I would love to get you guys, um, contact number, um, Kahou and kumu, mahalo.
I know you're looking at me. I will take you two for the, if you guys have any community questions and stuff like that. I, I know you're gonna put my ear outside this way. So you're the only two I'm gonna take.
I'm not gonna pull your ears. I'm gonna pull your hair. I'm just joking. I, I have no questions. Um, my son is a product of Punanaleo O A Anai and Ma'iliku Kahi. I also, because of him, am a, am a product of Punanaleo O A Anai and Ma'iliku Kahi. I, and so I, we see all this havoc within our kids, the trauma that's within our kids and the families, yeah? This, this is the way for us to ho'ola. Kakau, to ho'ola ka'ohana, to ho'ola ka'aina, to ho'ola kalahui. Ke kaya ulu, O A Anai ke kahi. I, and so I am begging you. Olelo Hawaii is important for us. To, to I, this movement forward, yeah? Yes, this movement forward. It is a safe place for our people, for our families, to learn and understand and remember who we are. It is the way for us to move forward, right? Our kids need to be the leaders of tomorrow and learning the language along with malamina ina is how to do it. Take advantage of this. But you know what? We need the rest of us and that's why I'm a part of this. I cannot stop with Olaloha Vai because once you know, you cannot not know. Yeah, and so I have that other side of the kuleana, and my kuleana, not pow, and Punanaleo and Ma'iliku Kahi taught me that. Navaheo Kalaniopu taught me that, right? And so we need more teachers. I've worked with Punanale, with Poina Ole, side by side, trying to make this movement, pono, and forward in our community. She has to jump from another organization to fill in the gap because we know enough, we know enough of us speaking our language right now. And we need it. So I beg you, I, this to move forward. And I beg you to come and learn the language so you can stand in the gap too for our kids' future. Oya veleno.
Mahalo.
Aloha, mahalo for letting me speak. I just wanna address him for a little bit. Mahalo Nui.
Just stick your, stick your name.
Oh, ova'uka pukili ikoanuka'aina o pulapulaka'apa'awa'ainai mayao. Aloha. Mahalo Nui, you know, for Ma'iliku Kahi for coming into our community. My babies are Punanaleo. My babies are Punanaleo babies and then they graduated at Hala'ukumana, meaning that they had to go all the way to Honolulu, even if they would've gone to Anue'nu'e. That's up in Palolo. So you folks being here in our community is awesome. I hope that after we get, you know, Papa Eono, we go to Papa Evalu, Papa Umi Kumalua. Yeah. Ekula nui. So let me address them now. So we all know that I love olelo hawai'i. And we need it because we are, even if we don't have the koko. We are hawai'i inside of us as well. So some of us don't know hawai'i, olelo hawai'i as well as others. But we're still learning, like, still learning. So again, encouraging the learning, Waianae Hawaiian Civic Club encourages you to join us to learn olelo hawai'i on the Mondays, every Monday. And then we also have numerous free online opportunities to learn olelo hawai'i. So the opportunities to learn is available to all of us. But for our babies, it's good for them to have that foundation. Our koko, not just the koko, but being the connection to the'aina, connection to our culture, to be able to express it, to live it, to share it. And that's how we are gonna preserve our Hawaiian way is through our babies. So we have this opportunity to support them. So I'd like to call for a motion or a vote of support. Mahalenui.
Aloha, everyone. I'm Austin Salsero. Uh, I think you satisfied, uh, you satisfied the conditional use permit, doesn't it?
Motion for that. Austin, I, I only had them two come up so we can finish up. We gotta move on from there. Is anybody?
So I want to make a motion that we support conditional use or expansion of conditional use for Ma'iliku Kahii to utilize the space. And it's a two-on-zero. Two-on-zero, Pualai wrote.
Second.
Any discussions? Um, the motion is to vote now or are we putting it on the next, next agenda? Or no?
So ask the clarifying question.
Clarifying question. Um, stated because it's not on our agenda to, so we need to, the clarifying question, are you requesting?
I am requesting that we vote on this tonight.
Good. Uh, Roko? Oh, voiceful? Okay. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any nays or any abstentions? You guys got our full support.
Mahalo, mahalo, nui. Um, I just wanna say, I was one of those bebés that had to go from Nanakuli all the way to Anue'nu'e. And this, this Kapapahana Oma'iliku Kahii was created by a Makua-driven group who advocated to have a Hawaiian medium educational program in the community. And so you have no idea what you have just supported. Because if not, without your support, we would've had more bebés. There would've been just like a lot of our moku'una or keke that gotta travel far. And so mahalenui for, um, for supporting.
Mahalo. Thank you.
I'd just like to say something real quick, but, um, I was brought on board in, um, September, um, to come on to, uh, Witma Iliku Kahii, um, to be the research. And so I'm the one that's pretty much gathering all the information with CUP and, um, DPP. And, um, it's something very, very huge from my medical field. And so I'm stuck in education now, but, um, this is just such a beautiful feeling to have the community's support. So mahalo. Mahalo.
Thank you, guys. We'll, we'll be seeing more of you guys, um, when we come up there and visit. Uh, we'll move on to a watershed management plan, uh, Board of Water Supply.
Hola, ikavai. Aloha mai'kako, I'm Lala Nas. Um, I come from Honuuli'uli and Hilo. And I say that Waianae hanai'd me. Um, mahalo, it is, um, it's an honor to represent this project. Um, I am the project manager representing SSFM, um, the planning and engineering firm that is supporting Board of Water Supply in updating the Waianae Watershed Management Plan. So we're gonna go through a little bit of overview of the project. You can go to the next slide. Um, I also wanna shout out Kelson Lee, Dominic Diaz, and Jenna Earl, as well as Kathleen, um, uh, Kahinui, I was like Elliot Kahinui, who are scattered around the room, uh, representing Board of Water Supply, um, as well as SSFM. So I'll get into it. We'll do a quick overview, talk about the planning process, the elements of the plan, project schedule, and then pow. And then if you folks have any Q and A and I cannot answer, there's other expertise and, um, who we hear that can support that. So we'll get into, uh, a little bit of the overview. I think you go back one, Jenna. Okay, real quick. Um, yeah, the overview. So, um, the, also the, the handouts you guys are getting. Um, one is a fact sheet, so that gives you guys a printed overview of the project in general, as well as a visual map of the district. And the other one is for an upcoming community engagement event, um, that Rep. Maroka is, um, hosting us, um, to be able to talk story about at one of his first Fridays coming up. So, uh, basically, we are undertaking the update to the Waianae Watershed Management Plan. Um, the last one is adopted in August of two thousand and nine. Long time ago, yeah? Uh, basically, the Waianae Watershed Management Plan establishes policies, projects, and strategies for implementation of sustainable management and use of surface and groundwater within the Waianae District through 2045. This overview here kinda gives you a visual of, um, governance when it comes to our water and our planning, to give you kind of an ecosystem of where this specific plan lies and how ideally they kind of interact, align with, and talk to each other. So the Waianae Watershed Management Plan, um, will be prepared in accordance with the State Water Code, Chapter 174C, as well as the city and county of Honolulu's Ordinance, Chapter 30. Um, our, the Waianae Watershed Management Plan is one of eight, um, district water management plans that comprise the Oahu Water Management Plan as a moku'ua as a whole. Is, and is really meant to align with the eight, um, development plans. We talked about a little bit earlier, as well as the, um, uh, sustainable community plans. So they're all supposed to be talking and interacting and aligning with each other, yeah? This one's specific to watershed. Um, we can go to the next slide. This is a good visual. So the map provides a visual understanding of the planned area, the specific regions within the district, um, and all the streams throughout. Um, our goal for data and information gathering really is to consider specific, unique, as well as common issues, um, and solutions for each of the regions. We, we understand there's a big difference, um, when it comes to Waianae moku'ua versus Ma'ilui versus Nanakuli, um, whether it's the built infrastructure, whether it's the waterways, um, and so forth. So we wanna be, you could say, ahupua specific and moku'ua cohesive. All right, next slide, please. So this one, as far as goals and objectives, it really is meant to be a holistic and community-driven process where we're, we're wanting, uh, the, the plan is meant to balance, um, considerations from preservation, restoration, and management, um, of watersheds. And then, um, the other side of it is that looking at sustainable ground and surface water use, um, to serve our current, as well as we're looking at forecasting, yeah? Multi-generations, future generations, especially if we're looking at this being a plan up into 2045. Um, objectives, promoting, um, sustainable watersheds, protect and enhance water quality and quantity, protect Native wine rights and traditional and customary practices, facilitate public participation, education, and project implementation, and meet water demands at a reasonable cost. Next slide, please. So there's a lot here, um, but I'll go through it really quickly. I think it's important to understand the elements of the plan. We've broken them down by chapter. And ideally, this isn't a plan that sits on a shelf and collects dust, but it's living and it's active and it's implementable. Um, so the chapter one really looks at the overview, um, the planning, uh, the planning framework, referencing county and state plans. Um, chapter two, the watershed profile and critical issues. This part is, um, is a, is a formal report that we work on that offers, uh, really a comprehensive assessment of water issues, including land use, the socioeconomics, um, water resources, et cetera, that make up, um, the components, really looking at the broader landscape from a holistic standpoint. The water, um, demand and supply and growth scenarios. So chapter three is really considering current use and supply systems and infrastructure, um, and presents future water use scenarios. Okay? Um, how much is used now, as well as what may be needed, um, in the future? And then really looking at this analysis that informs policy projects and strategies. And chapter four gets into those policies, projects, and strategies, um, really dedicated to taking the water resource, um, critical issues that we identify both through expertise, the technical expertise, and community expertise. So that weaving is really important, is part of the process for this plan. Um, and then that will help us understand, uh, taking the critical issues, the demand, supply, the growth scenarios, um, and really looking at identifying mitigation solutions and some of those projects and policies that we can, um, get, uh, implement, um, practically and ideally. And then chapter flat, uh, chapter five is the implementation program. So this is really looking at, meant to be, um, again, a living and actionable, um, process and plan, looking at schedule, milestones, tracking, monitoring information, education, um, and opportunities, um, as far as providing input, um, evaluation process, the technical relation, um, relational, as well as financial support that's gonna be needed for this. Um, looking at the, the plan from two thousand and nine, we're starting to assess it. When we see the thirty-three actions that are listed and who has kuleana or has their name, whether it's an agency or a community organization, I wanna emphasize the importance of this type of relational collaboration when we're formulating the actions and programs and policies that we wanna be able to implement realistically. Um, and then this last one here is just the planning process. So five major steps, um, really looking at, um, consistent and ongoing community outreach and stakeholder engagement throughout. Um, as you can see there, we're here right at the beginning. We started our research, um, and identifying key water resource issues from a technical side, as well as through stakeholder engagement. And we're drafting some of that, um, uh, information to be able to share out at upcoming meetings. Um, and then we'll be getting into more of the preliminary watershed analysis and water demand forecasting. This is a lot of the technical components, um, that are gonna be considered. And then we get into looking at the supply options and watersheds, um, throughout the moku'ua. Um, and then that will ideally guide some of the management policies, projects, and strategies that communities inform us on, as well as that is provided technical guidance on what, um, um, how realistic some of these projects can be or how can we support them from an agency government standpoint. Um, then agency review and public review, there will be a review of the draft. Again, throughout, I think the next slide is, um, before we get into the final plan, there's gonna be continued opportunity for folks to be able to check in, hold us accountable that we're hearing what folks are saying and that's being directly incorporated into, um, the plan, as well as policies, um, and projects. So these are the stakeholders that we reached out to in 2024, community organizations, the agricultural community, um, and as well as we just finished doing our rounds with some of our elected officials, um, Rep. Maroka, Rep. Kila, um, Senator Decort, who I think I saw here earlier, um, and, uh, council member to Pula. So we will be, if, if we are also, any suggestions for organizations, community groups that we should be talking to? Let us know, please. There's a QR code on those flyers that you can stay, um, basically sign up for email communication. You'll get information on upcoming events. You can contact us directly to talk story or give us suggestions on places, community groups we should be talking to. And then reference back just to the holistic picture, um, and then we'll be closing out for Q and A. The related initiatives, that, that map that we showed you earlier of the ecosystem of plans, these are two major ones that will be in alignment and guiding the watershed management, um, update. The Waianae Sustainable Communities Plan update, we are in, um, constant, um, conversation with DPP, who's leading that, um, to make sure that the watershed management plan is talking to the community, uh, Sustainable Community Plan and vice versa. Yeah? We're talking about vae, that should be at the center of how we're planning things, um, in many ways. And then the other one that just, um, just came abound is the Waianae Groundwater Management Area Designation. Um, the Board of Water Supply is petitioning the State Commission on Water Resource Management um, to designate the Waianae Aquifer Sector area as a groundwater management area. It's the only district that is not designated yet. So this is in process now. Um, and so we'll be in step in line with that process as well, which will be informing the watershed, uh, management plan update. And then this is looking at our schedule here, 2024 through 2027. Um, you can see, um, on the left-hand side, the processes that will be going through throughout this is stakeholder engagement. The stars are, um, more official community engagement events we'll be hosting, um, throughout the process and through the process. So as we gather data, as we talk to community members and stakeholders, we'll be able to share that back and continually build upon that through portions of the process and content. Um, and then contact information here. Again, I'm Lala Nas, Dominic Diaz with Board of Water Supply is the other contact. Um, I talked about the flyers. Um, so March seventh is our first kind of official, outside of neighborhood board meetings, um, is our official, um, event that we'll be attending. Mahalo again, Rep., um, Maroka for inviting us to your first Fridays. That's March seventh from seven to nine, um, at the Makaha Valley, um, Country Club. Uh, and we are looking to schedule our first official community meeting, um, either March nineteenth or twentieth, I believe. So we're confirming that in this coming week, um, and we'll be able to get the word out ASAP. So again, use that QR code if you can, sign up. We'll keep you folks informed. And mahalenui for your time, mahalo Chair and members for, um, putting us on your agenda tonight. Mahalo.
Thank you, um, for the sake of time, because there's something we really need to get, uh, to in board business. Um, I asked if you guys engage online, um, and encourage you guys to go to the March seventh, um, at the Lilicoi Lounge up in Makaha Valley Country Club. Um, Rep. Maroka said they're gonna be like poo-poos, not just. Um, I'll let Dana speak, one quick comment.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wanting our community to understand that this, the Sustainable Community Plan and this Water Management Plan goes hand in hand with how we move forward in a community, how we develop certain areas. So we gotta pay attention to this type of, um, you know, people coming to visit, we're gonna hanai you, but again, you're not the Board of Water Supply. You are contracted to kind of spread the message. Is that correct?
Aye, and help with the facilitation.
And help with the facilitation. So the discussion needs to be had. We all have kulianna into understanding how we develop certain areas in our community and how vai comes from Maoka to the Kai. If we not pay attention to that, we lose. Once again, we live in wayanai, two words, yeah? Vai, anai. Two of the things that we don't see flowing, we don't see the fish thriving. They don't go to the muli baid, non-existent almost. And so if we're not having those two things exist, we're not thriving as a community.
So, absolutely. Thank you, board member. Um, I'm Kathleen Pahinui. I am the Communication Manager for the Board of Water Supply. And I invite all of you to contact me. We are happy to come out and meet with all of you individually, if you wish, if there's something you wanna share with us. My number is 808-292-4672. That is my cell number. Joe Jordan has had to get ahold of me, so just call Joe, call Tiana, they know how to get ahold of me. Uh, but we are absolutely, this is your plan, and you are so right, sir. That is exactly what we wanna hear from. And you can't thrive unless everything's connected, so thank you. We are meeting regularly with DPP, so thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, thank you for your time coming up. Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, board business. Um, we're gonna go straight to, uh, 6.3, uh, consideration of new regular board, regular board meeting location, uh, being that this one will be shut down for construction. Do you guys have any suggestions?
I do, Chair.
Location?
Uh, do suggestions, because looking at the amount of, uh, mem, co, community members tonight, that would be a very tight space at the Satellite. So if we can look into Wainai High School Cafeteria, or possibly even Kai in a cafe, those, I don't know the jurisdiction, like as far as city being able to, to acquire those, uh, but there, there needs to be a bigger meeting facility. Or, I don't know if, how we feel about first use it in Nanakuli Library, but, but I know that's out of our Mokuwa.
What about a Boys and Girls Club, dude?
Boys and Girls Club, the, the, that could be a possibility. That's a discussion that can be had. Yeah.
Chair.
Great, Joe Jordan.
Um, since this has just been come known to the Neighborhood Commission in the last couple weeks, um, unfortunately, or fortunately for our community, there's gonna be some major repair at this district park, so we can't use this location for quite some time. Um, in the nick of time, I, we should at least approve a location for March and possibly April, and then come back to the board with other locations. Um, I'm gonna date myself right here, but the Wainai Coast Neighborhood Board used to meet at the Satellite City Hall. And we met there until about 2012, when the board made the decision to come over here because larger venue, a little bit cooler. Um, currently, the Wainai Satellite City Hall is managed by the city and county of Honolulu. So there will be no fee to the city to use that facility. Like, this is a ci, city facility and there is no fee charged to the commission. Um, unfortunately, other locations that are outside of city management or control, we will have to pay for a fee. So I think that should have some deeper conversation, because normally using a public DOE school will cost us roughly $300, $350 a night. Um, so I think for right now, I would like to make a motion for at least March and possibly April, if we can just at least use the Satellite City Hall. There is Wi-Fi over there. It can be used. Just as a side note, we were working with the Neighborhood Commission Secretary two years ago to use the Satellite City Hall as a future site for neighborhood board meetings. So we've had many conversations with Lloyd Yomanaka. Um, so I'll just make the motion to support the board to relocate for the March and April meeting to Wainai Satellite City Hall, remaining on the same date and the same time. Hopefully it is available. Hopefully our NA checked with the, it's available. I don't know.
Second.
Um, but that will be my motion for right now.
That was a second by Kokohou. Uh, any discussion?
Discussion, Chair. Uh, so I just want to also point out the fact that other boards across this ina utilize our DOE schools and that fees are given to the city. So I just don't want us to put that at our forefront, that we have to look at, oh, there's an expense to this, and then us be put into this small little room that can barely sit any of us, and that's gonna, uh, deter people from wanting to come to our board meetings when there's more space and more participation, I think is more, the better idea, and not so much the cost, because they already have allocations towards our board meetings in the case of, of fees that, that, that needs to be put out there. Not every community has the ability to have two city locations in the Mokuwa for us to utilize. So I don't think that we should put that in the forefront, but look at what's best for our community and the members participating. So that's just my, my discussion on that.
Joe Jordan?
Chair, this is just a stopgap for the next 60 days, so we can gather this information, bring it back to the board, so the board can discuss future meetings. That, that's all I'm trying to do, so we can have some time, because it will be the Chair's duty to research each one of these locations, get all the information, and bring it back to the board where we can make a more valid decision instead of finding out about this seven days ago. That, that's why I'm only saying for the next two months, Chair.
Good, yeah.
Um, so just chiming in on the conversation, it's a lot easier to have a city facility permitted for the neighborhood board meetings. Um, but it can still be actively, um, just like Member Jordan alluded to, actively researched to find a larger set location that the board wishes to be able to accommodate the amount of community that shows up. Um, so again, it is easier to permit that location while we actively try to look, actively try to permit another location, like a Department of Education school, like the Wainai High School Cafeteria.
The, the, thank you, Jeff. Uh, my concern is really that, um, crossing that line with state and city. Uh, we don't know for sure if that facilities, or whether it's the intermediate or the high school, or whatever, the, whatever state facility, we don't know for sure if that facility is not being used, because obviously, we don't know. Um, the city, I would suggest that we at least vote for March, because we can revisit this in March and see if we can, then, uh, then we'll have more information on getting a bigger facility. So I, I would suggest that we, we at least vote for March for, um, the Satellite and, and then find out more information on a bigger facility.
So Chair, you're making a...
Can I?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm making that motion then. That we vote for the Satellite. It's being that it is a city, um, building, uh, facility, and we'll be able to acquire that versus us trying to, um, jump into a state that we have no, on, not knowing. Um, and then we'll revisit this in March and we'll look to see if we can go into a bigger venue.
So actually, you're...
Satellite City Hall. The motion is to go for the Satellite City Hall.
So you're, um, asking for a friendly to my motion to change it to March only? That's what you're asking?
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, I accept your friendly to only do March. A second?
Second.
The friendly.
A second, a friendly.
There you go, Chair. So the motion has been changed.
Thank you for your guys' patience. Rokoh vote? Okay, voice vote. For the meeting to go to Satellite City Hall in March. Um, all in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Abstentions? Motion passed. And it is nine o'clock, and that's one of the things we needed to take care of, and we do have to adjourn, um, because it's nine o'clock. I thank you guys for coming. I thank you guys, whoever set up the chairs and stuff like that. Um, you guys be safe out there, drive safe, and we'll see you guys next month.
And to our elected officials and those that has traveled far to come to our meeting, we appreciate you. Mahalo.
And remember now, meeting is at the...